We will start today with the play.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, so you can see up there we have a birthday cake. That is for Ed and friends' birthdays. So that is there. You help yourself to that. I have a voting rule which is if we have more than 20 agenda items, I have to give my council members food. So that's why there's food over there. But I think we have a lot of little sandwiches. So you can help yourself to those little sandwich guys over there in the kitchen. And please help yourself to the cake. The other two council members are on their way. They should be here shortly. But we're gonna go ahead and fire it up and get moving. Alright, so, next up, we have two presentations. Linda, we have a proclamation declaring September 17th through 23rd as constitutional week. And then we also have a second presentation regarding October as our awareness awareness month. So. Somebody have this just made a question?
Yes, please.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Whereas on September 17, 1787, 55 delegates to the Constitutional Convention in Philadelphia's Independence Hall signed the United States Constitution, a document that serves as a guardian of our liberties. And whereas September 17, 2018 marks the 231st anniversary of the drafting of the Constitution of the United States of America by this Constitutional Convention. And whereas it's the privilege, honor, and duty of the American people to accord official recognition to this magnificent document. And whereas public law in 915 guarantees the issuance of the proclamation each year by the President of the United States of America, designating September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week. Now therefore, I, Dr. Markey Vargas, Mayor of the town of Lakewood Village in the state of Texas, hereby proclaim the week of September 17th through the 23rd as Constitution Week, and ask our citizens to reaffirm the ideals and framework of the Constitution we had in 1787 by vigilantly protecting the freedoms guaranteed to us, reflecting on the privileges of those of being an American with all rights and responsibilities with these privileges and honors.
Thank you, and the town of Dallas. The first thing we need is obviously an American resolution. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Alright. Whereas, the conduct of domestic violence violates an individual's dignity, security, and humanity. And whereas domestic violence is not confined to any group or groups of people, cuts across all economic, racial, and social barriers. Whereas the impact of domestic violence is wide-ranging, directly affecting individuals and society as a whole, here in the community throughout the United States and around the world. And whereas domestic violence remains a major public health, social justice, and human rights issue. And whereas more than 100 women are killed by a partner each year in Texas, and more than 70,000 Texans received services from family violence programs last year. Now therefore, I, Dr. Markey Vargas, Mayor of the town of Lakewood Village in the state of Texas, hereby proclaim that October of 2018 is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Call upon our citizens to speak out against domestic violence, actively work toward improving victim safety, and hold perpetrator of domestic abuse accountable for their actions against individual victims and our society as well.
I appreciate this. So October is Domestic Violence Awareness Month. Purple is the awareness color for national domestic violence awareness. And so if you have purple, I encourage you to wear it during October. I brought a couple of things, and I'll just leave these here, but if you want to take one. These are what we call quick stat cards. They just have information about some awareness events we have going on during October. So we're having a Dogs Against Domestic Violence dog costume parade. One of the things that we know is that kind of unspoken, in domestic violence situations, animals are often harmed. And so we are trying to raise some awareness around that. It often is a barrier for someone trying to leave an abusive relationship if there's a pet involved. They're afraid to leave the pet in the care of an abuser. And so we're trying to bring some awareness around that. We're also having an event called Healing Through the Arts on October 11th, where we will have different mediums of art that will be on display at the Bridgeton Arts Council Building. And if you're someone who is musical, or a singer, or even those types who is, we have a choir that we've started as an initiative. One of our board members had a sister who passed away in November, and she was very musical. And so her name was Lori. So we've served a choir called Lori's Joy that we are using as part of Healing Through the Arts. And then on October 18th, we have an event called the Clothesline Project and a candlelight vigil. And so in the proclamation, it mentioned that over 100 women in Texas are killed at the hands of an intimate partner every year. And so we try to honor those women by doing a candlelight vigil each October. And so we'll be doing that. And a Clothesline Project, where people are invited to paint a T-shirt that we hang up on a clothesline to be a display, trying to end violence in our community. And so those events are all listed on this. And then there are some statistics on the other side, as well as all of our friends, the family contact information. We provide free counseling, advocacy, shelter, car assistance services to those impacted by domestic violence and sexual assault. And so we appreciate the town for working on it in October. And I'll leave these.
Thank you, Elaine.
Thank you.
Alright. Next up, we have a public hearing. Public hearing is scheduled on the proposed combined property tax rate of 30 cents to provide an opportunity for citizen comment. So we have a public hearing. This is our third one. We had one in July, we had one in August, we had one in September. The proposed tax rate is the same as last year, the same as spent in the past, the same 30 cents. So the public hearing is now open. Does anybody have any questions about our tax rate?
Motion to close the public hearing on the tax rate.
A motion of second. All those in favor?
I'm sorry, who has the second?
Yeah, one and two choice, Linda. Move the second question. Alright, thank you. Alright, next up, we have a public hearing. And a public hearing is scheduled to provide an opportunity for citizen comment on proposed ordinance changes in Agenda Items GA through G15. So we have a tradition that we started a couple of years ago, where if we are thinking of considering an ordinance, we allow the public to give comment if they want to regarding an ordinance which is up for the council. So we have so many that we just grouped it all together. Does anyone have any questions about any ordinances?
Motion to close the public hearing on the ordinances.
A motion to close the public hearing. Daryl's got the second. And all those in favor? Alright, thank you very much. Alright, next up, we have business citizens stormed at this time. Any person with business before the council not scheduled on the agenda, they speak to the council. No formal action may be taken on these items after meeting. Linda, any remarks?
No.
Alright, next up, we'll go to the consent agenda. All the items on the consent agenda are expected to be self-explanatory and will be enacted by one motion. There will be no separate discussion on these items unless a council member requests an item to be removed from the consent agenda. There was one small change, it was a tiny little minute, we already made that adjustment. Does anyone have any questions about any items on the consent agenda?
Okay, motion to approve the consent agenda.
A motion to approve the consent agenda. Daryl's got the second. All those in favor? Very good, thank you. Alright, moving up, we are on the first item here, consideration, our variance request for flatwork encroachment in the side yard setback. We're drawing a 409 peninsula. I believe that's Mr. Mike Valment is back again for encore performance. Mike, appreciate you coming by.
No problem. I'm requesting a variance for a side yard extension of the driveway, staying pretty much out of the front lawn, not lighting in front of the drive approach going into the property. Just trying to be able to put a reasonable vehicle on the side of the property. That's pretty much it. I mean, the other property, there's no driveway adjacent to it. It's on the other property lines. So there's a lot of front yard on both sides of the driveways.
Now, we have, and on the right-hand side near the street, that's the big inlet you rebuilt. We built one on the opposite side, you built that one. So that's the big square box inlet.
Correct.
That's down on the edge of the property right over there. So that's why there's a little bit of sweep to the approach because of that inlet.
So the driveway would be from here to the blue line drawn in?
The blue line drawn in, yes.
Has the math been done on that? Because I mean, we have zoned, we can't go over 50% concrete. Have you done that math?
Well, on the left-hand side.
I mean, the porch, the building line, just visually, it's real close. I just want to make sure that.
I haven't done that. No, I don't have the final numbers on that part.
Mike, what are the 10 dots there with blocks around?
That's plenty of bed.
Okay, so that's, yeah, that's not a porch plan. Yeah, I think you're okay. And just for the councils, in the past, we have allowed stacking space beside the driveways to allow for, you know, the problem is, you gotta get the cars off the driveway. Most gotta move behind the other way to get in the garage doors. Mike Lindley, I think, is the most recent example where he had a garage and he wanted to have stacking space beside his, so he wanted to make the driveway wider to allow a car to be on the driveway and not block the garage door. And that was around the Corrigan Peninsula, and we granted that. So we've done this in the past. As long as it does not extend into the side yard, and this does not, I mean, basically, it's not a little nook there where the garage punches out. And you understand, Mike, that there's no concrete to weigh the side yard.
Correct.
So basically, we're stopping right there. And that's because this garage has a punch out there, right? Just an architectural feature there, right? It's probably, that's where we're stopping. So from the city's point of view, we've done this previously. We don't have a problem. I think as long as Mike's three feet off the line, which has been kind of consistent with what we've done. I think Mike had also, or the other, Mike Lindley had to be three feet off the line as well. That was what we partied him to. Okay? So the city doesn't have a problem with it. Counsel, any questions?
I'm okay. I just, let's, I just want to make sure we double check, make sure 50%. Visually, it looks, I mean, it's close. I just want to make sure. But I mean, as far as going away tonight, that would be the only condition I could run it. We just do the math on it real quick.
What is the 50% you're talking about?
So in the zoning, we don't allow more than 50% good purpose service in the front yard. From that mindset, I would say.
Yeah, I'd say that, I mean, from right here to right here, there's probably 50% of the property. And there's still a lot of this remaining additional piece of it down there.
Like I said, I just.
Well, if you want to make a conditional, I'll take that one and make the calculation.
Yeah.
And if it's not, then.
To me, if it's just not blatant, obvious, front of the class, so let's just make sure we do the math.
I'll double check.
Thank you.
Okay, are we gonna take a motion?
Anybody else have comments? Motion to approve the variance on 409 Pennsylvania driveway extension.
Okay, a motion. Daryl's got the second. All those in favor?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Alright, thank you. Okay. Mike's gone. Okay, that was that. Alright, Mike's out of here. Alright, next up, we have International Dark Skies Association, the IDA presentation. And we have Mr. Gary Carver here. We appreciate you coming in all the way from the far east side of Metroplex to come all the way to the west side. So, Ed, let me turn this over to you.
Okay. Well, let me take just a minute to premierize yourselves with Gary. If you had an opportunity to look at the agenda packet, it has a little bit of a bio was included. In case you didn't have the chance to look at it, let me just mention a few things that I think will be helpful as far as acquainting yourself with this background. Gary has a long history with the Texas Astronomical Society and the Texas chapter of the IDA, International Dark Skies Association. He's held leadership positions in the Astronomical Society for the past 29 years. He's also an amateur astronomer in North Texas for more than 50 years. And so he's probably 29 like I am as well.
That's right.
He, most recently, has been working real closely with the Texas Parks and Wildlife Department for establishing night sky preservation programs in our state parks. And his efforts have included Copper Breaks State Park, Olapinto as well, and then Cap Rock Canyon State Park. He's, I'd like to mention that he's been very supportive in terms of our efforts to become an IDA-designated community. And for that, I very much appreciate that. So Gary, thanks all you are.
Thank you, Ed, and Mayor, and the council, and the community for being here tonight to listen to this. So as Ed said, I've been in astronomy for a long time, and do a lot of volunteer work, outreach, public outreach. Science to me is just a passion. And astronomy's been a way for me to actually use that passion productively to inspire young people. And so I wear a lot of different hats. Texas Astronomical Society of Dallas, I've been past president, director. I'm currently a director again, and it looks like I'll be taking the president's seat for another two years in September. IDA has approached me. They want me to start leading the North Texas section. We're gonna divide the state up into, I think, four or five regions, and try and get folks all over the state to start working more diligently with the Texas Parks and the Community, using private citizens, in fact, that have a passion about getting the lights in it full. As you'll see in this presentation, we've got some big challenges here. So, no further ado. So another will answer these following questions. What is light pollution? How does it affect us? How does it affect our environment? What can we do about it? And we're gonna find more information. There's all different angles to talk about how light pollution impacts our lives and the lives of all the animals on Earth. And we'll get into some of those details. So just imagine for a moment, if you will, that we grew up on a planet, Captain E. Does anybody remember what that two means? That's the planet in Star Wars that had two suns. So this would be a planet orbiting a binary star system with two suns and no light. What would humanity think of itself? What would we believe? What would we truly understand about our place in the vast universe we live in? It's kind of hard to see. Is there lights we can shut down a little more? I don't know if that'll help a whole lot.
Come on?
No, no, that's, so, is that a pretty picture? Who thinks it's pretty?
What?
Is it a pretty picture? Pretty? It's well composed, with powerful views after. Who can tell me what's missing in that photograph? The night sky. Who'd have seen something like this? And out in the night sky, have you seen the Milky Way before? Up overhead, at most times, billions and billions of stars. It's been a long time for many of us. Some, 90% of us now, have never seen this. Okay? If you have, count the lucky stars. I like to quote by William Makepeace Packer, he says, "When you look at me, when you think of me, I'm in paradise." For early human populations, our night sky interpretation were gatherings around a campfire telling epic stories of man and beast, mythological struggles of morals and gods. But it's much more important. Without the natural night sky, we would not have circumnavigated the globe, walked on the moon, learned of our vast expanding universe, or discovered that humans are native stars. Who knows what this photograph is?
Mango, this painting. Mago's Star Night?
Yep. So, Star Night by Vincent Mago, painted in 1889, depicts a view from the east-facing window of the asylum room, where he spent quite a bit of time painting some of his greatest works. What do you suppose Vincent would paint for us today? Quite a different picture. And here's why. Most regions of the world now that have large populated areas have humongous issues with light. We light up that night sky because we don't really design these lights in a way that makes sense. And if you notice here, there's a tsunami heading towards us from the east. Basically, we settled the east, we've been moving to the west over many centuries. Look where that line is crossing right now. Here's Dallas, one of the worst defended cities in the west. This is now a different way to measure that light. You're looking at satellite views and maps that are taking the illumination seen from space and assigning numbers to them. There's a couple of different numbers. It's expressed in the world scale or magnitude per arc second squared. Here's where we are in that map, Dallas. That's really my backyard, the arrows pointing at. And here's where you guys live. You've got a nice little peninsula here, but look what's happening all around you. These are the contentious areas that are gonna eventually work their way north and impose their lack of controlling those lights. And so there'll be some of the communities that we'll want to talk to next to try and get the lights. You know, this is Denton over here, and Frisco on the side. So we've got some challenges there, but if you guys are thinking, if they can just imagine, it really will help push this forward. You've got 19.34. That's actually a little better than my backyard. My backyard's about 18.3. So you're a magnitude per arc second squared darker than I am, primarily because you've got the lake protecting you on this side. But to the north, there's growth that you have. So, IDA's goals and objectives, our work includes initiatives for education outreach, like we are tonight. We assign seals of approval to fixtures that meet IDA's objectives in terms of being night sky friendly. We work on international dark sky places and dark sky communities, like you guys are applying for. Parks are protected areas, Texas State Parks. Sea turtle conservation, which is really one of the very first recognitions that not only is this light pollution annoying, but it actually is having a negative impact on the wildlife. It led to public policy on that. We do consulting projects on large-scale efforts to try and fix things. This has been going on now on a lot of large communities that have scientific research facilities, observatories primarily nearby. And then we have recognition reward programs to recognize communities and projects for doing the right thing and moving in this direction. So how does it affect us? Well, for three billion years, life on Earth existed in a rhythm of light and dark. It was created solely by the illumination of the sun, moon, and the stars. Now artificial light will empower that darkness, and our cities glow by disrupting the natural day/night pattern and shifting the delicate balance in the environment. I like to tell the story, especially when I'm talking to kids. Do you think you're smarter than a dung beetle? It's a dung beetle. It's a beetle that goes out, rolls up little balls and dung, and takes them home. And scientists puzzled about how the heck were they doing this? Because they would do it in the daytime, they would do it in the nighttime, they'd do it if the moon was up, they'd do it if the stars were out. They'd do it virtually all the time unless it's pouring down rain. So one scientist decided, well, let's go experiment with this. So they observed a dung beetle. The dung beetle would go out, make his little ball, jump on top of it, flirry his wings, do this little dance, jump off the ball, and beeline for home. So they went and built a wall. The wall was just, you know, basically, give my force across the ground. The dung beetle hit the wall, he'd follow the wall down until they got around the end of it, jump back up, do his little dance, beeline straight forward. How does this work? So they put a ball cap on him. They assumed it had to be something to do with his ability to see the light. And sure enough, with the little ball cap on top, he was lost. He could navigate by the stars, he could navigate by the sun, he could navigate by the moon, and find his way back home. He has mapped out, birds follow these same things. So there's a lot of different native effects of natural resources. There's increased energy consumption, impacts for our night sky heritage, impacts the nocturnal ecosystems of wildlife, human health. We're now seeing the instances of breast cancer, prostate cancer, sleep disorders, obesity. A lot of other things are linked to high blue wavelength light. We'll talk a little bit about that. Then there's misconceptions regarding light, crime, and safety. As gave a talk to Master Naturalist over a four worth one year. And the lady stood up after the meeting and said, you know, I wish you'd talk to the police around our area. I said, what's going on there? Well, they've got a complete misconception of safety. My house got broken into, and they came out, took a report, and told me, well, I should put more lights. I got broken into in the middle of the day. So there's no scientific link between crime and safety. Dark skies do not mean dark ground. We'll talk about what that means. What's defined light pollution? Urban skyglow, light trespass, clutter, glare, energy waste. What do all these things mean, and how does that work? Well, first, we have to talk about directing light. Okay? Take your traditional street light, this is an old sad lens. And these lenses were somewhat sheerly from the top, but they still had this sad lens that allowed light to watch upwards from the front of the fixture. It would go up into the sky, bounce off a cloud deck, and back down to the ground. It would bounce off bright white concrete, back up to the sky. It illuminated straight up into the sky. And then it could be damped around the horizon and fall back into an area that it shouldn't be in. So light trespass is still light coming from another property. That means my bedroom window might be lit by your backyard light. Glare is when you see the bright film of that light. You shouldn't be able to see that light source. If you can see that light source from where you stand, the light wasn't really well-designed. It causes our eyes to shut down, and it's troublesome and dangerous to see where we're going when we've got lights right in our eyes. Clutter is just having way too many lights. We'll see pictures and examples of this. It causes confusion as well, because you really can't see, you know, what might be happening in your periphery when there's just so many lights in front of you, especially when you're driving at night. Energy waste is costing us over a billion dollars a year. This is probably four or five-year-old information. In the U.S. alone, just to light up the night sky, and for what reason? In some cases, I really can't tell. We've got some of these huge colored television sets, I'll call them, the electronic billboards now, playing ad after ad after ad at 4:00 AM in the morning when there's virtually nobody there. We've got car dealerships that light up the parking lot. If there's nobody in there buying cars, 3:00 AM in the morning either. Why do we do these things? And then the result is urban skyglow, where we can see these domes of lights over the cities. You get out in the country where you can see the Milky Way, if you look down at the horizon, you can pretty well pick out, oh, there's Dallas over there, there's Abilene over here. It's very visible from great distances. So here's an example of light trespass. One of the worst types of lights is the acorn light, where you've got basically a glow on top of a light pole. And it's illuminating 360 degrees in three axes.
We absolutely don't.
Yep, we've got it too. And they're around. And they're the most difficult light to do anything about, because the whole fixture needs to be replaced to address this. There's maybe a few clever ways to go in and put a cylinder around the light to try and make it, you know, go up and down. But if you're not tapping the top, you're still illuminating the sky. So it's really a large amount of wasted light. At least half the energy is being wasted in directions it shouldn't go. Some fixtures will still light up to other properties. Well, here's an example of somebody's bedroom window or living room window. And it could be prevented by taking care of placement and alignment of the light, and basically putting the right kind of shield on the thing. How would you like to try and sleep or watch TV in that room? Glare. Generally speaking, if you can see the filaments, the source from a reasonable distance, and the light's not well-shielded, safety and security are compromised. Why? Your iris shuts down, right? So you're just, your eye's trying to protect itself from all that glare. And so you cannot see low, or it produces high contrast shadows, you can't see the difference. see low, or produces high-contrast shadows, you can't see the differences, and these shadows actually become corners of darkness. Now, how many actually see the guy standing right here by the light? See his legs? Here's an example of a college campus, that they put up a bunch of 20-foot poles, big light, the lights out of the field of view, because it would have really overexposed the light in this area up here. 20-foot poles, and it was intended to go in and make it safer for the students that were on this campus. According to a 2011 study, London's Street Lights and Crime, there's no good evidence that increased lighting produces total crime. 1997 National Intuitive Justice Study concluded, we have very little confidence that improved lighting prevents crime. The truth is, bad or how more lighting can decrease safety by making victims of property easier to see. I always like to say, I don't like my yard, because I want the trimmer to have to jump that guy out there if they're going to do something, you know, try to steal my goods, I'm not going to make it easy for them to come pick it. Now, watch that student. He's still in the picture. Go back. Do you see where he is? Look at the bottom of the light.
No, he's at the pole.
He's in the shadow. So this is an example of a light intended to make it safer, but you actually have areas where now the bad guy's going to stand and not be seen at all. Clutter is excessive glare, making driving difficult, and light clutter, making cause distraction. For safety reasons, every effort should be made to establish quality lighting. So here's a whole street lined with those. And there's just tremendous amounts of lights for businesses as well. Billboards and outdoor signs are designed to attract our attention. I've got one of these right at the Allen exit, Stacy Road exit, right off the highway where I live. And at 4:00 AM, when I've come from an outreach event and I'm headed home, this is what I see, and it just is painful to my eyes. Fairly bookwormed, we talked to the developer who was proposing to do it, to try to get the entire idea pushed out, that they wanted to do it anyway. But what we did to get them to agree to do it was actually turn it off at 10 o'clock at night. There's nobody shopping in our commercial district at night. They agreed to do that. We also have adaptive controls, so at night, it cuts the luminescence output down significantly so that the average light level at night is appropriate for the eye, rather than what we see on the Allen side, leaving it full brightness. I see a lot of these now on college campuses, and at night, they don't have adaptive controls. And it's very hard to see the sidewalk in front of you, because it's down at the hollow level, wherever you want it to be. But there's no way to control the light. There's, you know, half this light is going up into the sky. There's really no way to direct.
Gary?
Yes, sir.
A question for you. So back to that college campus one, we're talking about the light.
Yeah.
So what's the take?